Call the meeting to order. It's a committee of the whole for February 8th, 2022. The village of Sayward is respectfully acknowledged that we are gathered on the unceded territorial territories. Can you speak today? Traditional territories of the Comox First Nation, the traditional keepers of our land. So we call them in to order. Introduction of late items. Anyone? No one. Okay. Approval of agenda. Resolution. Does the agenda look good to everybody?
Looks fine.
It's good. Okay, we really need a recommendation resolution on that, do we? Hmm, maybe? Nope, okay. Minutes of previous. There's none. Petition and delegations, there's none. Correspondence, none. Counselors' report, none. Reporter committees, none. Mayor's report, none. Unfinished business, none. This is just ticking right along. Staff report, financial plan 2022 to 2026, version two. So we're going to do the resolution first and then we'll review the document. So recommended resolution that the committee of the whole receives the financial plan for 2022, 2026, version two. Report for information and discussion. Do I have a motion, please? Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed. Hearing none, motion is carried. So we will now turn it over to the CFO scale.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is version two of the financial plan that I'm bringing to you tonight. I've what essentially what I've done is I've gone off what was directed in the first version and updated the financial plan with comments and direction from council. I've again included the timeline just as a refresher for everybody so we all know where we are in the process and what's coming up. So tonight is February 8th and we have another committee of the whole meeting on February 22nd. As as was mentioned at the last meeting, that's a new meeting to replace the meeting that we missed at the beginning of January. So I think tonight we'll just go through all of the different sections again and you know differently if you have questions, which I'm sure you will, and you'll want to go through some line items in the financial plan tonight. Maybe a little bit more detailed than the first go around. We can certainly do that. So the first item was council travel, training and education. I did reduce the budget by approximately 30% and that was based on direction from council in the first round of budget talks. So it's been brought down to 11,850 for 2022. And again, that's just based on some of the seminars and courses in 2022, probably being virtual. I know a lot of organizations are moving to virtual because of COVID. There is going to be some in-person stuff this year, so EBCM is in person, AVICC is in person. So there's still those travel costs in the budget.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did you check, find out whether there's courses for the new council? In October?
I did not, no, but I know that that was asked, so I will make another note. I forgot to do that. Sorry about that.
All good. We have it for the next one.
Yes. Um. So number two is various operating. Yeah, go ahead, Council.
Could I just, thank you. Could I just ask about the LG LA dates because I see in my little blue book here that they're supposed to be from the ninth to the 11th of. Or maybe that's just the direct, no, that's LG LA. Is there a changed date on that?
I think that's just the, maybe the electoral areas forum. I'm not sure. I don't have that calendar in front of me. What does it actually say?
Yeah, it does say that at the bottom, EA Director's Forum.
Yeah, so LG LA does put on other courses and seminars and things.
Right.
Later in the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. So moving on, if you flip the page to page five, we can just start going through all of these sections again, which feed right from the strategic plan. Community relations would be the first category and we can go through those three items there. The first item was interpretive signage at the KFN Totem Pole. I have not included that in the budget yet because I do recall at the last meeting, there was some discussion on collaborating with the tourism committee and possibly Comox First Nation to fund this this item. So it's not in the current version of the financial plan. If council wanted to add that in, that would be an additional item and you can definitely direct me to do that if you'd like, but you know, I think based on what was discussed, we should potentially look for some funding.
Okay.
Yeah, externally.
Let me ask a question. The signage is also in another category mixed with cleaning the buildings and so on and so forth.
Right.
That's 7,500. So is this not a duplication?
No, this was specifically for Comox First Nation signage and interpretive things in the village. So specifically at the Totem Pole, perhaps at the estuary. It was specific to Comox First Nation, whereas the other signage was wayfinding, the ORV route, off-road vehicle route signage. More like municipality type related signage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next item is legal agreement to clarify terms and communications around early start times of Western Forest products and measures in place to manage dust and noise. Anything that's in this report that is orange is included in this version of the financial plan. I forgot to mention that actually. So if it's black, it's not in the financial plan. If it's orange, it has been included. So that has been included at $1,000 and that would just be some some legal fees in getting that agreement put together and reviewed. The third item under community relations is measures for cooling center in place that we put that in at 40,000. I did contact the province to see if the community works funds could be used for this project or the COVID-19 reserve funds and unfortunately neither of them can be used for this project. And I I think I'll defer to the the CAO on this because I think there's some information that he was wanting to bring to council on this tonight.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity to meet with Sean Koopman and just get his take on on cooling centers and long story short is is cooling centers are are really for life safety emergencies versus, you know, inconvenienced and comfort of of the citizens. So you know, there is, there is plenty of good reasons to have air conditioning and cooling at the Kelsey Center. Senior Comfort is one, but what 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 he is sort of saying and and I can put these in in your mailboxes. What he is saying is that the sole reason for air conditioning is to offer a cooling center. Cooling centers here for on the island here are something that, you know, we we don't experience prolonged heat for a long period of time. And so that is what he wanted to put forward for for consideration. And so I'll I'll leave it to Mayor and Council to 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 decide on that.
I would think, though, in terms of an air exchange unit, which is part of the cooling system. Correct? Where I'm surprised at the grant, like if it's if it's an air exchange system, would the COVID grant not cover that?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, it won't. The COVID-19 restart grants are specifically for expenditures related to reopening costs, lost revenues, cleaning. Whereas a cooling center, it doesn't really relate. I mean, yes, there's the the fact with the air exchange and reducing the virus and all of that stuff, but it doesn't fit into the the category that the categories that they provided and I did confirm that with them. I had spoken to somebody there.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion that if if we can't get grants for this and 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 given the CAO's information there that we would just leave this for now, like take it out?
Agreed. Counselor Poulsen, do you agree?
Hmm. I'll, I'd have to think about that. I think after we had the real hot spell last summer. Anticipating another one this summer. Maybe a little bit overboard, but I guess I'd be okay with taking it out for the moment.
Well, the thing is if we yeah, if we don't have a grant, we don't have the money anywhere else to pay for this with the expenditures that we have coming up with the drainage.
Right.
Plan. There's no way that we can pull the money from somewhere else without a grant.
All right, but this hasn't, this isn't in the financial plan right now because it's in black.
No. Correct.
So we just want to make sure it doesn't get in there.
That's right. So drop it.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Um, thank you. So the actually the other thing I wanted to mention and it was in Sean's little note there. As far as cooling centers was possibly looking into the fire department having a misting station. And that might be something that council could consider for this year. It would probably be in obviously consultation with the fire department to see what equipment would be needed to get that set up. CAO?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great option. The other thing that was put forward is extending the pool hours so people can come in and cool off and we're we're exploring that now as well.
Okay, so moving on to the next section, economic development. 10,000 has been put in the budget for what did I put here? Updated development framework and included including updated zoning bylaw and building permit calculation process and access to additional staff resources. So this is just sort of a token amount put in the budget to pay for additional contract labor consultant work with the anticipated increase in building permits and development permit applications for 2022. It more than likely it's going to be more than 10,000. But I've just put that in for now and I I believe the CAO might have had some comments on that for tonight, so I'll let him chat on that.
Absolutely. So the the issue with billing permits, subdivisions and so forth is is a big one. And I'm getting more and more knowledge on on what we require to 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 have happen for approvals on on some of these things and you know, one, one such thing is is an approving officer to be appointed. So really, I think the next step here is I'm going to get some information back and then I'll be able to do a presentation on what that could potentially look like. And so I'm hoping to have that information for you for the next cow.
So could I just ask a question here? We put in $10,000 in terms of cost and staff resources and so on and so forth. Is, should this not be reflected in our fees? And we should be recovering that cost on the other end because if a developer is coming in to do a subdivision, that cost is it not put on to the developer?
Theoretically, yes. Our our fees and rates, however, are in need of of updates. So that's, that's, that's one piece of the puzzle. The other one is what that looks like for securing an approving officer is is another piece of the puzzle. And then also looking at, you know, what what the office here in the village of Sayward has the expertise to do in-house and what really should be going out to get done. So that that's going to require quite a bit of investigation yet. We also know that your your former CAO was was a planner and and was able to do some of that work internally. However, we we now need to take a look at what the actual true cost will be to take a look at what seems to be some pretty substantial requests coming in for subdivisions and development.
Okay.
I just wanted to add to that. Thank you, CAO. Just wanted to add that. So a key thing in there is the building permit calculation process that ties into everything we're talking about. It was cited that how we calculate them has an effect on what we're able to charge. So that's a key ingredient and there's is whether it's a consultant or whoever that we get that down. So it's, 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 it's better calculated. So it's more in our interest. We're, we're, we're getting more money out of it. Does that make sense?
Agreed. It does. Thank you very much.
The next item is progress made on the working waterfront project. I left the project plan that was produced by Barefoot Planning in, I believe, 20, I want to say 2017. I left that in everyone's mailboxes. I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to briefly go over that that report. I think at this point, it's it's likely that this won't be in the budget for 2022. It's you know, looking at that document and looking at their recommendations and and what, you know, they're proposing for the Wharf area. It's, it's, it's probably looking like a grant is going to be needed for that. That's sort of a a big ticket item. So you know, tonight, I don't know if council wanted to just maybe chat quickly about that and and make a decision on what to do do with that. It's in here because it's part of your strategic plan. So again, strategic plan funnels into this financial plan. So I've put it in here, but again, you may want to revisit it in a future year and CAO, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything to that.
You know, I think you've you've covered that off. I, you know, that that's going to be a pretty extensive project and lots of moving parts to that. So we were looking for guidance on on what you'd like to, how to proceed with that. There has been some interest from a development perspective, but again, we're at the very early stages of that currently.
Yeah, with with Roger, but gets proposed. And also with Mike Adamas, I mean, I think at this point, I think we should look at this for next year. We have some big tickets that have to be covered this year. So my suggestion is we move this to 2023 and revisit it at that time after the drainage plan has been been fixed. Counselor? Any counselor have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I would agree.
Counselor Tinsley?
I would agree, and I think we've got a component in here that also has to address it, which is part of the risk assessment on the ships. I think that's in here. The the sunken ships there. So it's, it's kind of like horse and cart kind of thing, the developments and related to this. So I totally agree is the bottom line. Sorry.
Counselor Poulsen?
I agree too. I would also like to just keep it so that it's in 2023 because hopefully by then we'll have some further development going in that area. Hopefully this year we will and as this is part of our the waterfront plan is the development with the the private investors. And and part of the costs of that would fall to would be picked up by them. So yeah, I think if we just move it to 2023 would be. But keep it on the within eyesight.
Okay, CAO, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just, the other comment I was going to make is the taking a look at our water and sewer as well as a strong component to large-scale development. So I think with those studies being addressed first would be a a natural good step.
Great. It's getting in the way.
Okay, next section is infrastructure upgrades and asset replacement. First two are water master plan and sewage capacity study. I've put in a budget of 25,000 for each item and I've confirmed with the province that the community works fund reserve can be used to fund those two items. So that's the gas tax that the village receives every year and we put it into a reserve. It can be used for specific projects, plans. There's a, there's a list that the province gives us that we can refer to. And again, I'm going to defer to the CAO to chat about these two items.
So as as mentioned, quite a bit of interest for development. So I think these are absolutely necessary to start as soon as we we can. In terms of the budget that's been allocated for that, I I think that will work and see if we can get some some clarity on what those master, the master plan and the sewage capacity study at this this early stage before requests or proposals go out, just to make sure we're, we've got we've got the right values in. But other than that, definitely a priority to to have those studies done.
So a question to this CFO. When you have it in red, that's in the financial, but it's also covered off for a grant. So when we look at the end number that we need to run the village at the end of the year, are these numbers in there?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. They are in the budget, but they're covered by a reserve, so that doesn't affect taxes per se, if that's the question you're asking.
Yeah, because wouldn't we be basing the taxes on the total amount that we need to operate? Or are all these things that are covered off on grants minus for that? For example, if we need a million three and we minus all the grants and everything else and we're down to a million. Like, is that the number we're basing our taxes on?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item is the drainage project stage one. That is going to be brought to council at the February 15th regular meeting with a more fulsome report. The grant writer Urban Systems has sent us some information and it's looking like the total project cost is a little bit higher than initially thought. And that's just due to some additional, I think they're called jellyfish traps or something. It's, it's an environmental. I I'm not quite sure what it is, but again, that'll be come to you next week in a report. So that that has not been put in the budget as of yet because it's not anticipated that this project will start in 2022. I'm guessing it's not going to start till 2023. It'll take that long for the grant to to be approved or not. And then for the village to determine where our portion of the funds are coming from. You can see later on in my report here that my recommendation is that the village goes to long-term debt for this. So again, I'll have more information next week.
So a question is so the million four is not the correct amount that Urban Systems applied for the grant for? It's going to be higher?
Uh, thank you. Yes, they they haven't applied yet because the deadline, I believe, is February 27th, I want to say, maybe earlier than that.
Six.
26, okay. But yes, that that information will come to you next week with the the dollar figure, the total amount. Yeah, it's it's higher than 1.4, yes, but not, I'm not, it's not much higher. It's not like 3 million or anything like that.
So we're already at February 8th. Why haven't they actually sent in the the request?
It's quite a comprehensive grant application and they were pulling information from the village. There was some history that needed to be given to them and some historical information. And, you know, they're trying to make it as as fulsome as possible to ensure that the village is approved the grant. So it's just taking some time to make sure that everything is, all the pieces are pulled together and that the grant is submitted, obviously on time, but as a complete package.
Okay, well, I'm I'm glad we got the extension then.
Can I have something? I, could I say something?
No. Certainly.
I think one thing we need to be cautious about is the amount of the grant. And if it's if this is the, whatever the amount Urban Systems comes in with now, we have to keep in mind that by the time the work is actually, the project is actually started, those costs could go up significantly higher, just like what happened with the Newcastle Dam and the Weir, the water project. And it was very difficult after, after the fact to to get more money. It involved meeting with the provincial government and doing all kinds of investigating to find out exactly why the why the cost had gone so high and and as time passed, it's a normal thing. So I think we just need to be very cautious about the amounts allocated for the grants and consider the when they're going to actually start.
Yeah, I think that's an important point you brought up there, Counselor Poulsen, because when we're reviewing our budget and we see items that are really not as crucial to have done for 2022 and that monies could go towards that 27, which could be 35%. With time all said and done, this, I think it's very important for us as council to keep that in mind that there is probably going to be an increase, never mind the 400,000. And if we can come up with as much money as we can and borrow less, that's where the benefit is to the village and the taxpayers. If we can just borrow less, save a little bit more money and be prepared.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a number for what we're spending on the Newcastle Dam project this year?
I don't have a specific number for you, but it's a carryforward. So there isn't any additional costs. It's just finishing up the project based on last year's budget. So there isn't anything to add to 2022. There's nothing new.
Okay, it's just in the reserves waiting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is short and long-term projects for the Kelsey Center. I put in here that more info will be presented to council at a future meeting. You know, I think now that the CAO has has been hired, that's something that he's probably going to start working on and I I think I did mention at the last committee of the whole meeting that we did get a few quotes on some safety concerns, some safety issues that need to be addressed. So I think that's a completely different discussion. The other thing I wanted to mention, you know, going through all of these items is the financial plan is sort of a living document. It's, it's not set in stone. It can be amended at any time. So, you know, as we go through the year, if something comes up or, you know, there's an expenditure that needs to take place, that is brought to council. Council can make a decision. The financial plan can be amended. So I I guess I make that point because, you know, looking at that line item, you, we don't need to figure it out tonight. You know, it can be something that can be brought to council later in the year. And then at that point, it's, you know, discussed, okay, well, where is the funding going to come for this? And and again, the financial plan can be amended accordingly. So I'm not sure if anyone wanted to make any comments on that, maybe possibly the CAO?
Uh, the, the thing I'll say is that that there will be a very, very short report, just going over some of the work that's that's just started for the Kelsey Center to bring council up to up to date with what we're working on now. So that'll be next council and then, you know, we continue to take a look at the 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 long-term strategy. For now, what what's, what what the team is focused on is is what to do immediately and with the priority being getting that pool open. So more next council.
Thank you.
The next three items are fire department related. It's just some equipment that's needed and that's just coming out of operating surplus. It's so what did I put here? Self-contained breathing apparatus, bunker gear and some, and a volume pump for engine four. And those two of those are capital costs, I believe, because they're over 5,000, they're 5,000 or over for equipment. So that is shared with the Strassgong Regional District. Next section is Living Green. Solar panels for the water treatment plant. We had originally discussed at the last meeting perhaps putting the entire care up reserve, about 21,000. All of that towards the water treatment plant. I did have some info below. I don't know if we wanted to maybe flip to that now or wait. You know what? Let's just hold off on that. And I'll go through the rest here. Next item, water meter bylaw in place. That is a placeholder for any contract labor or legal that we need to get that water meter bylaw in place in 2022. It's not actually, again, installing the water meters or any of that. It's just getting that bylaw up and running so that hopefully maybe by the end of this year, but for sure in 2023, the bylaw will be active and water meters can be installed.
So sorry.
Does council have any? Does council have any comments on that?
Just to clarify on that, we're, it's, it's starting off as like for new buildings, right? That's basically where we're starting, just so that people aren't listening to when, oh geez, we're gonna get hit with, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, commercial resident, commercial and new residential construction.
Yes, yes, just so.
Old, old commercial, like the hotel and WFP and that, but none of the everybody else is not included in that.
Yeah, exactly.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear because when people are watching this, they'll be like, oh, water meters for everyone, you know, that kind of thing. Which may, we may, we probably will end up at some point, but we're not doing it right now.
No.
Okay, next item is electric vehicle charging station installed. I haven't done anything with that. I'm, I'm not sure if council still wants to pursue that. You know, it's in your, it's in your strategic plan, so I put it here as part of the financial plan talks. Yeah, I'm not too sure. Maybe the CIO wants to chat about that or council just to, you know, figure out what we're going to do with that.
Well, CIO, you got something on that?
Well, the, the only thing I would say there is this is a very nice thing to have for a community. But but it's, it's a nice thing to have. And and I think we do have some priorities this year, would would be my recommendation. But I'll leave that with 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 Mayor and council. The other thing to to address too is the capacity from a power perspective to to facilitate that in the location that 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 you're thinking about. So just need council direction if if you want more work done.
I think this is the private sector matter. Personally, I think we should be encouraging somebody from the private sector. For example, the developers that are looking at doing some work down on the waterfront. I think for them to put in electric charging stations, for example, at that piece we've donated to Mr. Pickett. You know, something like that. Any thoughts from council?
Um, I I would, I would agree.
Council Tinsley?
Oh, sorry, I I would agree that it should be private based. It's also, it's also a part of a tourism type thing too and attractions to business. Because, like theoretically, someone up at the crossroads could decide they're going to put one in there. And then that's good and bad, and that some people would just stop there and charge and go on from there, right? Well, it would be a good draw to bring people down to the waterfront as part of that whole waterfront project, right?
Agreed. Counselor Paulson?
That's a good point that Counselor Tinsley made. It's a tourism draw and having one in the village with the private sector would probably be the most sensible for us.
Okay, so should we take it off our strategic plan?
Would it be fair to add it to 2023 like we did to something else?
Sure.
Okay, the next item is community garden revitalized. And we had discussed that the funds for that would be coming from the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program Reserve. There's some possible collaboration with volunteers and Sayward Futures on this and grant funding. I just saw that there's a grant out right now through Mid Island Co-op. Actually, I don't know if it's Mid Island, but it's the Co-op for community spaces, and this may fit into that grant. I was going to reach out to Sayward Futures Society because I I don't believe a municipality can apply for the grant. It has to be some sort of a nonprofit community organization. But if Sayward Futures was to apply for it, the municipality can hold the funds and distribute the funds. And I believe it's between 25,000 and 50,000 is the grant. So I'm going to get some more information on that and I will bring that to, hoping to bring that to your next meeting.
That sounds good.
I I believe it is 25 to 150,000.
Whoa.
We have, yeah.
That sounds better.
We have tried applying for it before, but it's like the the drainage system is, it's very comprehensive. And so we've actually started considering, from Sayward Futures' point of view, considering applying for it for this year.
Okay, that'd be something I think that's going to be important for you to review with the CFO. From the Sayward Futures.
Yep, so I will bring more information on that to the next meeting. I I mean, I think it would be great for the community garden. We could, you know, do greenhouses and planter boxes and expand it and and it would really fit into their criteria of a community space.
Does water space include there? Okay, so what about some work on our pond, like for example, there's a is there not some type of pump that is inside the pond not functioning at this time? Do we know? But maybe there's some work that could be done on the pond? Counselor Paulson?
Uh, that's a, that's a pretty big project to take on and it involves the minis, the Ministry for Fishery, Fisheries Department because it's it's been looked into before to have it dredged and cleaned out, but because the water flows in from the ocean and then goes back out again, it's believed that there's fish in there. So it's a huge investment in time and and finding out how how we can work with the Department of, or sorry, the Fisheries. But it certainly sounds to me like a very worthwhile project.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make a note of that.
Sorry, CIO?
I was just going to say too, for when you, when you take a look at the value of some of these grants, I I would encourage us to think about grant writing companies that that have the expertise to help facilitate this. And and I know we've done that already. But, you know, when we're, when we're looking at 25 to 150,000 potential dollars and and what that could incorporate, maybe it is worth expanding that out.
Yeah, we would just have to, I guess, balance the cost because it's not 100% guaranteed after we put out the money that we're actually going to get the grant and where is that money to pay the grant writer going to come from? So we have to sort of balance that as well. I mean, I agree. I mean, if if a grant is not written properly, there is 100% chance you're not going to get it as as we've seen in the past. So we definitely have to figure that out.
Yep. It's a good idea though.
Go ahead, CIO. CFO?
Okay, the next item is tourism development and that includes one line item for some upgraded signage, cleaning and painting village buildings and structures and enhancing the village gardens, and that includes the ORV signage. So I put $7,500 into the financial plan for that. Again, there might be some collaboration with the Tourism Committee. You know, there might be a small grant out there somewhere that that we can get this year, but for now I've put 7,500 in the budget.
Is there any opportunity, does council have any up, any appetite to decrease that a little more? I mean, the fire department should be cleaning their own building, pardon me. We have decrease. Well, there's lots of money coming up. Sorry, CFO?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to clarify, the fire department building is owned by the village, just just for clarification purposes.
No, I understand.
Our building.
Yeah, no, I understand that. It's no different than when they painted Hall Two, though they all got volunteers and they and they took care of it, right? I just, we've, you know, we've got to find close to $400,000 or less than that loan amount. So I'm just not sure if if painting and enhancing, I mean, cleaning, fine, but other than that, I think the number should be dropped. I really do. What is your opinion, council?
Um, you go ahead, Counselor Paulson.
I was looking at this and wondering if maybe there was a possibility of using volunteers from the grant that we have on, what's it called, Kindling Community Kindness? And doing a be proud of your, of your village and have people come out and and volunteer to power wash or paint or clean what, you know, whatever there is to do. And that would certainly give, hopefully, it would give people a feeling of ownership and pride in their community.
CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Paulson, I think that's a really good idea. The Kindling Community Kindness Grant, however, was specifically for volunteers to help individuals. So not to, like you say, help with building maintenance or anything like that. It was to help seniors in the community who are having issues with being, being in their home and not able to return their recycling or take out their garbage or shovel their snow or do gardening. It was, it was more for those types of items. But you, but but yeah, I think getting a volunteer crew together is 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 a potential. It's just, I don't believe that the grant funding can be used in this case.
Okay, thank you.
So
Counselor Tinsley?
So, to to add Counselor Paulson's great point and idea, community event like that is a good community building thing, getting people together to do the basic things like, you know, some basic cleaning and painting, simple stuff, right? And so to the mayor's point around reducing it a bit, then we're focusing on the professional stuff, which is professional signage for the ORV. And I believe, because this is tourism, it includes some professional signage for some of the the trail areas that are are not as well marked or whatever. So I think we could, my, I think we could probably reduce it to 5,000, given that, you know, if we go with this concept of maybe a community events around some of those things and then the professional signage being 5,000 to cover that stuff.
Okay, Counselor Paulson, you agree, 5,000?
I I do agree, and I'm just wondering if part of that can, part of the COVID revitalization money could come into play here with revitalizing our village.
I think it potentially could because it talks about reopening, right? Reopening and all that.
Yeah, no, I think that'll be a bit of a stretch. I think we could use some of that COVID money to mitigate the the financial loss that we had in the Kelsey Center. We can do that, but is there a deadline deadline on that grant on when, how long that money can be spent?
No.
Not yet? Okay, so I think we need to find out what the study is going to be from the SRD regarding the rec center. I think some of that COVID money can be very easily, and it's designed for to take out some of the operational loss that we incurred last year. So that's a conversation that we should be having. Say, how much money is left in the COVID fund, CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually just prepared a report today that's going to be on your February fifteenth agenda regarding that exact topic. So it's outlining the operational losses for the Kelsey Center for 2021 and the COVID expenses and the balance of the reserve. So that report is ready to go and it's going to be on your next agenda.
Good. So we should be looking at taking a chunk out of that and mitigating that. Counselor Paulson?
Yes, I just.
Are you just scratching your head or?
No. I just wanted to ask a question about a comment you just made about the study that the SRD is doing on the Kelsey Center. Is this some?
On rec centers across? No, we discussed that at a few meetings back before Christmas, that the SRD was looking at doing a study on all recreational centers in the SRD. Because remember, you also stated that you didn't want to make any changes or do anything with the Kelsey Center until that study came out. Because I said we should have a committee of people to look at how we can make the Kelsey Center mitigate some of the losses, what kind of programs. And Counselor Paulson, I believe it was you that stated, until the study comes out, we shouldn't put anything into place. And I believe that was, I think that was October or something like that. Now, there's been a delay. There's been a delay from the SRD getting the study awarded, but I understand it's going to be starting shortly. But that study included, includes all rec centers within the SRD. Do you recall that now, Counselor Paulson?
I, yes, I do. And
Okay.
I I think it would be great if we had like things like this included in the, in the report because it completely slipped my mind. I know we're waiting for the fire.
Yeah, part two of the fire study?
Yeah, that they're doing, but I'd completely forgotten about the so it would be nice to have those, like all of these studies that are going on or supposed to be going on so that we can kind of keep track of them.
So why don't we add that to the rolling spreadsheet that is going to be coming out? No, somewhere else? Just to be announced, because we don't know. I don't, I haven't been given a date when the study is going to happen. I know they're working on it now and but it hasn't been awarded to anybody at this point. So as soon as it is, I will bring that back to council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just to confirm, we're reducing that budget for signage to 5,000, signage and painting of buildings?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to village operations. The first item is create and staff public works on call backup position. And I'm going to defer that over to the CIO to discuss. I don't think there's any specific details tonight, but I think he just had a couple of comments about that.
That's, that's something I've been, thank you, CFO. That's something I've been working with Tony on and getting a sense of, you know, the best way to approach this, whether that looked like casual or on call. And it was determined that for 2022, our best approach is on call. We are very conscious that we have to start thinking about succession at some point and and training. And as the village grows, we'll, we'll have to explore this, but the, the funds that are in there now would be used to offset overtime and and deal with extra hours incurred as a result of the water treatment plant and monitoring that as well as snow events. So we'll have more information rolling out from, from that department soon. But that, that value that's, that's allocated there seems to be the the right figure for this year at least.
Any comments, Counselor?
Sorry, just, just a question to just a question to the CEO. So when you mentioned overtime, so like this position, the idea is that if if a Tony or a Mike couldn't be doing their job for whatever reason, this position would step in, right? So whether it's overtime or not.
Uh, correct. Yeah, that would be, that would be optimal. So, yeah, there is, there is some tasks that are being done right now, which will be resolved by infrastructure on the way, which is, which is great. But there is some monitoring and then that that needs to be done. Particularly at this time of year, for example, with the water treatment plant, that that somebody has to be there all the time. So this, this gives us a bit of a backup in in those circumstances. And then we'll have to think about training, depending on how involved that position will be.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, so, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Paulson?
I, I have a concern about having it as a casual position. If somebody is going to be orientated to a job that come, like coming in cold and going to do something at the water plant that you haven't been trained on or anything, I would prefer to have a I'd prefer to see a, like a six month orientation where they're doing the the job regularly on a, on a rotation. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is that neither one of these employees are looking at long term employment. They're, they're getting close to retirement. And so I think the sooner we have somebody trained and capable of doing the job, the better off we're going to be. Otherwise, I don't think there's any sense in going ahead with solar energy or anything at the water plant because if these, if these two regular employees are gone, nobody's going to know how to operate that. So I I think we're putting our I think we're putting ourselves in a pretty precarious position if we're not bringing somebody in and fully training them to the job. And if they can be casual in Campbell River or Sayward or but attracting somebody to work in a casual position and getting a few hours this week and some three weeks of work when somebody's on vacation, it's not very attractive. So I think we should really consider what, what we're going to do to fill, backfill these positions.
Can, can I just add to Counselor Paulson's point? Oh, sorry.
Just a sec. Let the CAO respond to Counselor Paulson for a moment?
Yep.
Thank you for, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Absolutely. Sorry, I did not recommend that we would, we would seek a casual position because that would be almost impossible to attract. And the training contingent is certainly a strong aspect of that. So for this year, we were looking at ways of sort of mitigating the extra time that the two gentlemen were putting in, fully realizing that at some point in time, we really have to do look at succession. Now, in doing so, you're, even a part-time employees that we can train is going to be a challenge to find. Most of those employees are full-time employees. So that will come with a price. You know, at this point in time, even having a company that that has the training, some of those are out of Vancouver in terms of the water treatment. Their response time on an on-call basis, together with the costs associated to get them here would be unattainable almost. So we are, I do believe that Tony has a candidate that that's in mind, at least for coverage for the interim, what we think about our long-term strategy. But this will require budgeting and and in terms of the $30,000 allotment that we've got in place now, that would be, that would be tight if we're looking at, you know, a full-time, a full-time role with that kind of experience.
30,000 doesn't even come near for a full-time operation. Sorry, Counselor Tinsley, go ahead.
So I just wanted to add to both Counselor Paulson's and the CEO's, both excellent points. So I mean, the way I would envision this is, is yes, we're looking for a special person who, you know, is, is, is of, of a younger age who knows that potentially this job is going to become full-time, but is able to work on, you know, on the on-call basis, but we would need to commit to also that person being paid for a certain amount of on-hand work per month, right, which is the training plus staying in touch with the equipment. So there's kind of a minimum, you know, minimum guarantee of hours regardless that is involved in training and hands-on operating the machines. And then that, so that keeps that person in touch so that they're, they're ready and and that involves, you know, base whatever it, whatever the salary is, to keep them for those hours, right? But it is a special person, as we've mentioned, that, you know, it's going to consider that they're training for this position, right? The, the, the part, the most difficult part, as the CEO mentioned, and I think we all know, is the certificate for the water, which Tony has. And as I understand, the closest person that has that certificate here is something like up in Port Neal or something like that. So that is the biggest animal, but that's, you know, we can get to that as we get to that, shall we say? It's the other things that we're really concerned about right now. Anyway, that's my two bits.
I, I agree with, with both counselors. I think it's, I mean, I think 30,000 is going to be extremely light. I think we need to still consider the suggestion planning that we have in place, or we don't have, because, and start this program relatively soon. Now, whether it be a casual, part-time and on-call, they're guaranteed three days a week? Or, or something in that, you know, structure. But even at three days a week, this 30,000 is not going to cover it. Sorry, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. Would we be able to get some more information from the CFO on what the costs of overtime have been for the past year? And compare that to this amount that we need to include in the budget so that if we're trying to mitigate our expenses or keep our expenses down for the regular staff by not incurring overtime, then what has the cost of that overtime been? And even around snow events? Like, you know, they were working 22 hours a day and straight, straight right through. So if we could have some kind of idea what that, what those overtime costs incurred and, and then look at, because we paid those overtime costs out, so then could we better use those on regular time pay for a new employee?
Well, you'll, you'll see in the financials where there's overages in, in salary.
I have, yes.
Right? And I'm sure that, that's also a part of that, right? So, I mean, you also got to look at the fact that going into November, we had our Public Works Forum and with six weeks of holidays remaining. So, and, and that just can't happen. We should never be in a position to where we have an employee that needs to take six weeks of holidays and six weeks left in the year. Correct? So, I mean, and he was obviously working those days and he couldn't take the time.
Yeah.
Am I wrong, CFO?
Yeah, so any, what I'll do is, at the next CAB meeting, I will bring a wages and benefits report to council. And depending on how in-depth it is, it may be in camera. I can probably do some at the regular meeting, the regular committee, the whole meeting, but depending on what information I include, I might put it as an in-camera report, but I will definitely pull some information together. I'll, I'll talk with the CAO about this on-call position. We'll look at, you know, for 2022, what that looks like as far as cost. Maybe it'll be lower than 30,000, maybe it'll be higher. We'll pull together a more fulsome report and have that on your next committee of the whole agenda to discuss wages and salaries specifically.
You, you also have the opportunity to have somebody, if we bring somebody in, to cover off those holiday times as well as events.
Yeah.
So, we'll move on.
Okay, the next item is risk management strategy that I believe was to determine if there was any items in, within the village boundaries that would create a liability for the village. That would include the ships down at the wharf, even though they're on private property. Counsel, I think, was concerned about what liability risk was there for the village. So again, I've confirmed with the province that we can use the Community Works Fund reserve money for this study's report. And I've, same thing, I put in about 25,000. For now, I don't know, you know, the CEO, I think, is going to probably take the lead on this. I don't know if it's going to be less or more. I'll defer to the CEO now if you wanted to add something.
No, it'd be the same, the same that I'd add from before. We'll, we'll start to reach out and see if we can get a more defined number prior to going to RFP on that. So we know which values we're looking at.
Okay, moving on. So back under, what category was it? Yes, living green, thank you. We had an item in there for solar panels for the water treatment plant. So we did a little bit of research on that. And it's been determined that in order to save on electricity costs, the solar panel project would have to be at a cost of approximately $90,000 to $100,000. So I think the CAO's got a little bit more info on that, and he will speak now.
Thank you. On top of that, we, we have discovered that that $90,000 to $100,000 would not include battery banks. So that it comes with substantial charge as well. So really what we'd be looking at is spending roughly $100,000 for solar panels that would be direct charged. So that would only be relevant for, you know, days that, that they would be able to charge. So, you know, weather dependent. We wouldn't be able to store energy, so there wouldn't be an offset there. Our current hydro use monthly, while for the years, is roughly $11,917 monthly. So really, when you, when you do the math on $100,000 spend, it's about 9.08 years for an ROI. And the solar panels are about a 25-year lifespan, not inclusive to the components, but the panels themselves. So I did want to bring that to council's attention. Just when you, when you take a look at the investment compared to the return and the fact that it doesn't include stored power, it would, it would, it would be my recommendation that, that we take that under advisement as well with, with $100,000 and the amount of years to, even if it was, to be clear, that 9.08 years for an ROI, that's if we're getting 100% of power based on solar, which is impossible with the, with the setup without battery banks.
No, you would have to. You would have to have battery banks set up. But I assume that there's got to be grants out there for, for this type of thing. And unless we can get a grant to cover it, then my suggestion is we don't look at it at this point, unless we can get a grant. Counsel, what do you think? Do you agree or disagree?
I would agree with that. I mean, we're, we're kind of green anyway. All our power comes from hydro, which is basically green.
Counselor Paulson, you agree?
Yes.
Unless we get a grant?
My comment that I have written beside this is what are the number of years it'll take to recoup this investment? Because 90 to $100,000 is a lot of electricity and yeah.
So 10 years, 10 years, yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah. Before we even start saving money.
10, 10 years ROI, 10, 10 years ROI would be based on 100% offset, which we would not realize. Yeah.
I personally would like to see a program. Yeah, I personally would like to see a program in place. They've had them in, in different areas where they're using, you know, of course, water-generated power in an isolated community to where you're completely off the grid from hydro. I mean, the amount of power outages that we experienced are going to continue as long as hydro doesn't put the power underground or cut back the trees, right? So I would rather see us go into something a little more self-sufficient, if possible, in the future. That's my thought.
I agree.
Go ahead, CFO.
Yep.
Okay, so just on that project, then, you know, myself and the CEO are probably looking for some direction as to whether we keep it on the work plan for 2022 to look at grant funding. Does council want us using our time to look for grants this year for that or push it to 2023?
I would think we should to 2023, counsel?
I would agree with that. Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
And if Elon Musk time to bring the cost of batteries down.
There you go.
Okay, moving on to the drainage project. I just included a little bit of info here on debt financing for the village portion. And again, as mentioned earlier in this meeting, we'll have a more comprehensive report at the February 15th regular council meeting on this project. I contacted the MFA and we do not have to get approval of the electors for this particular debt financing. And that's in accordance with Section 7 of the Municipal Liabilities Regulation. There's a complicated formula that they use. It's 5% of revenues. It's, it's very convoluted, but basically what it does is it's, it looks at what the village can afford for debt financing every year. And this particular project, we would be able to debt finance without having a referendum.
3.9%, 3.09%? Does that not seem high?
That's the current market, market rate right now. So rates fluctuate. I just based that, that 28,000 for principal and interest payments on the current market rate today. So again, more information at the February 15th meeting. Next item, working waterfront project. Did we already, I think we already talked about that, didn't we?
Yep.
Yes.
And did we? Yep. So we can move on from that. Yep, 2023. Okay, good. Moving over to page eight, we'll just go into number six. So tax and user fee increases in this version of the plan. Staff have included a 7% increase for municipal taxes and sewer user fees, a 5% increase for water user fees, and a 3% increase for solid waste user fees. And those increases are inputted just based on the current financial plan expenditures to ensure that it is self-funding. And I've included a little chart there to show the effects of these increases per average household. So you can see that I've got columns for each percentage increase and the total. So municipal taxes would go up on app for an average household by $92. Water user fees would go up by $19, sewer by 20, and solid waste by seven. So that would be a total increase on an average home of $139. In 2021, Representative House in the village had an assessed value of 243, about 244,000 compared to 236,000 and 213,000 for 2020 and 2019 respectively. That represents a change of 3% between 2020 and 2021. Assessments for 2022 show an average increase of 28% for residential properties. So things are going up here in Sayward. Assessments are rising. Representative House in 2022 now has an assessed value of over 300,000, about 313,000. In 2021, that Representative House paid approximately 3,000 in property taxes and user fees. Now that includes general municipal taxes, parcel taxes, other government taxes such as library, hospital, Comox, Strathcona Waste Management, regional district, and user fees, which is sewer, water, garbage. As can be seen in my chart above, for 2022, the average home will see an increase of $92 on the municipal portion of, portion of taxes and an increase of $46 on user fees for a total increase of $139 on the municipal portion of their tax bill. The village has no control over any other increases, for example, school tax, police tax, hospital. Those are all set by the external agencies and we have no control over that. So the municipal portion equates to an increase of 38 cents per day over a one-year period. And again, that, those increases are based on current expenditures in the financial plan. If things change from now to when the financial plan bylaw is passed, based on further discussions that we'll be having, that may need to be adjusted.
So this just covers the current costs. This does not give us any cushion for parts for the water treatment plant? Nothing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. It also does not give any room for reserve funding to follow our new reserve policy. Nothing extra, just operating expenses that are in the financial plan currently.
I'm sorry, I'm confused because last year we had a, what was it, a 2.5% tax increase? So adding another four and a half percent. Has all the costs increased that much? Like where, why is it four and a half percent higher than average?
Thank you. It's mostly to do with the things that are in your strategic plan that I have now put into your financial plan. So all of the things that we've just gone through, you know, the, the adding of $5,000 here, $10,000 there. You know, increases to staff wages because we now have a CAO on board, whereas last year, our CAO left at the end of November. The public works position, increases in hydro costs, et cetera. So.
Well, so in order to have a reserve, we're going to have to look at somewhere like 10% is what you're indicating.
That's correct.
Well, so this is where I go back to us being very careful on what we spend to all of a sudden come out in one year between 7 and 10% increase is substantial. In my opinion, thoughts, counsel?
So my, my thoughts are, like, part of this, at least 3% of this 4.5 is just basic inflation. Right? And so you got one And so you got one point six, so we're not that much bad on top. I, you know, I mean, it's, it's the real world, the, you know, property goes up in value, people own more, you know, taxes go up, that's just the nature of it, right? Um, the things that we've got on our list here are not, they're not fluff. They're, they're things to improve the community and for the benefit of citizens and also for business and attracting tourism and things like that. So, you know, we're, we're dealing with the same thing and nobody wants to any, at, at any, at any time pay anymore. But the reality is inflation's there. We're also in a, a cycle now where it, it may get worse. And you know, if we, if, if we want to buffer something like this and say we're going to meet our reserve requirements, then we might want to start with something like seven percent, you know, put a little bit on, onto this. Um, but you know, there's a point where people get all excited, right? And you have, we all have to be willing to, you know, push back and say, well, real world is, it's, it's, it's not going to go away. Inflation comes along and things come along, right?
CFO?
Uh, thank you. So the, the other comment I just wanted to quickly make was um, I, I've been here since the beginning of two thousand and seventeen and every year the tax increase has always been two point five percent. It's not, that isn't sustainable. And what has been happening over those years, it's, I mean, I think it's been going on for several years, even before my time, is when that tax increase is, is kept at that rate every single year, council is then relying on surpluses and reserves to fund things rather than building their surpluses and reserves to fund things. So the, the surpluses and reserves have been draining ever so slightly, so slowly, over the last, say, five to ten years, where we're now at a point where, you know, that, that we can't rely on that anymore because they're, they're emptying. And, and that is in direct relation to council's decision of, oh, we don't want to increase taxes, leave it at two point five percent. So I ju, I just wanted to make that little quick comment as to why we're in this situation now.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with your, with your comment at all. I think if uh, if we are being responsible in our spending, then it can justify that increase because as you said, it's never been before in the last X amount of years. And we don't have a reserve and we have to have reserves. We have to have monies in place for when a pump goes, when some other piece of machinery goes. Things have to be there in place. We have to be, even if we don't put a lot, a lot of money into reserve, but over ten years, that can be substantial, but we have to be cognizant of what we're spending. And we have to be responsible in order to justify that type of an increase. In my opinion. So council, uh, is this, uh, do we need to make a decision at this point?
Uh, no, there's no need to make any decision at this point. It was just information tonight. And as we, you know, have our next committee of the whole meeting, I'll bring the exact same information to council and, you know, I, I think um, what are the dates here on my chart? At one point, the financial plan does go to a regular meeting of council and that's when council can approve the financial plan at that point and make a decision.
Okay, um, can I ask to see at the next cow? What uh, seven, eight point five and nine point five would look like? Yes, council, you agree?
Yes, that'd be great.
Yes, yes. I would just, uh, if I could say um, on some property that I own out of town, every time I, every time I get my um, tax notice or utilities bill, there's a little brochure that comes out with it and it explains where all of my tax dollars are going. And to me, it's really informative because I'm not living there anymore. So I, I'm not noticing the things that are going on regularly. But when you get something like that with everything written down and account, accounting for where your money is going and what it's buying, it's a little bit easier to understand why things um, keep going up. And. You know, the nature of the beast is that things do keep going up. And people have to realize that when so many houses are sold and the price goes up for the houses that are, that you're lit, that you own or you're living in, at some point, you're going to reap the benefit of that when you sell. But um, people, people don't like to have to um, pay the taxes, but the value of your house is increasing. And so of course, the value of uh, the cost of the taxes are going to go up. So I think getting some information with the tax notices or um, well, because I get them with my water and utilities uh, bills quarterly too, but um, since that's included in our, in our um, the whole tax package. Um, so it's um, a very informative piece of information that people get. So they don't just figure that they're uh, getting ripped off by the village. They see what, where their money is going. Thank you.
Go ahead, CEO, CEO.
Yep, thank you, uh, Councilor Paulson. So that's something that I started actually last year in the tax notices for the village. I did include a little pamphlet uh, with a little pie chart that I created showing where everyone's taxes uh, go to. But I think for this year, I'm going to elaborate a little bit more on that chart and split it up a little bit more. I, I think I had a general um, section on the pie chart that just said administration. But if we can break that down a little bit more, um, same with parks and recreation, maybe a little bit more detail for people. Um, you know, I can definitely include that in a little brochure that goes out with tax notices.
So one other question regarding um, recreation, if we use some of that COVID funding, will that make also a difference going back into our reserves because we're going to incur less of a loss? Is that not correct?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that I've already included in the budget. So again, I've done a report that's coming to your next council meeting as to what the operating losses were for two thousand and twenty one and what my recommendation is for transfers from the COVID reserve. I've included that in this version of the financial plan. So that isn't anything extra, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to, there's only a few capital items in the budget for two thousand and twenty two and those are uh, the snow insulting dump truck. That's just a continuation um, from the year that we purchased the truck. Uh, it's funded through general surplus and it's about fourteen thousand dollars a year. It's a loan through the MFA, five-year loan. And I believe two thousand and twenty two is year three. Uh, replacing rescue thirty three, that is to be determined. I have not put that in the budget. It, it's on the list, but I, I think until the SRD and the village sort of have the conversation that needs to be had about the fire department and the study is completed, I don't think anything's going to happen with that. And similarly for the gen, generator for fire hall number one, that would be an operating cost. So um, it would be, sorry, a capital cost. So it would be split fifty fifty with the SRD according to our current agreement. That might be changing for two thousand and twenty two. So I haven't, it, again, it's on the list of capital items that need to be purchased, but I have not uh, put that in the financial plan until, till that uh, issue is sorted out. So I think that's it for my staff report. I'm thinking that there's probably some line items in the financial plan that council may want to go through. So if there was any questions on that, we can certainly look at that now and I will do my best to answer your questions. If I don't have the answer, I will get it for you.
Okay, council, have you um, gone through the financial plan line by line? Is there any questions that you have?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Councilor Paulson?
A sec. Um. For the taxation, on, on the general revenue, sorry, the summary of the operating revenue, it says taxation, general municipal purpose. And the budget is for three hundred and seventy three thousand, seven hundred and seventy three. Does that include the um, seven percent increase as on the chart that you outlined?
Yes, that's correct. It does.
Okay.
Okay, um, sorry?
I have another, um, on the health clinic, the one thousand dollar a budget for um, total operating revenue. Um, I was wondering what that was for, the thousand dollars.
Sorry, just give me one sec here.
Yeah.
So are you referring to the maintenance and repairs that's in the budget for two thousand and twenty two?
It's under, it's under, on this.
Seventeen.
Total operating, oh yeah, page seventeen.
Uh. That's under operating expenditures. So your, your, your orange line there is a summary of all your operating revenues up above and then operating expenditures are down below. So the health clinic has a thousand dollars of operating expenditures for two thousand and twenty two, unless I'm missing, misunderstanding your question.
Do they, do they pay that? Does the revenue come from the health clinic?
Um, that's specifically for building costs. So de, depending on what the expenditure is and how the lease um, agreement is, is read. Um, the health clinic is only responsible for operating costs of the building, but because the village owns the building, uh, we are responsible for major repairs to the building. So I've put just a token amount in there for, you know, let's say the, the hot water tank burst, which it won't because we have a brand new one this year. But um, if it did, that's, that's what that would.
So it's a landlord cost?
Correct.
Okay.
So um, a couple, one thing is um, we briefly spoke about was the federal community works grant fund. The actual last year was uh, one thirty nine, seven, down to seventy one.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So every year it's approximately seventy thousand, seventy, seventy five thousand. In two thousand and twenty one, the prob, sorry, the feds doubled the gas tax. So that was a one-time doubling payment.
Okay.
We like that.
Now, earlier you're saying you're bringing, I know you're bringing it to the Tuesday meeting. I may not be there, but the recreational center being budgeted as a loss of uh, two hundred and thirty two. Correct? That's under operational revenue. Expenditures, same page seventeen. Showing last year one ninety five, one seven six and per two thousand and twenty two, two thirty two, seven thirty two.
Correct. So if you um, look at that number compared to last year's budget, last year's budget was a uh, expenditure of two hundred and thirty eight thousand. Two thousand and twenty two is two thirty two, so it's.
Right, but you, you mentioned earlier that the COVID money grant was included in this budget.
Correct. Uh, for, sorry, for, so for two thousand and twenty one is what, the information I'm bringing to you next week. So the uh, operating revenue losses for two thousand and twenty one. Um, but for two thousand and twenty two, that's a good point. I did not include that in there, in the budget. So yes, good catch.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, roads, forty seven thousand from thirty five thousand last year, actual. So what is the, the jump of thirteen thousand there? Probably not thirteen thousand, but uh, five, eight thousand dollars.
I believe that has to do with some road patching that needs to be done. Let me look.
Twelve grand for like forty seven thousand dollars for roads?
Um, sorry, just give me a second.
No problem.
Yes, that is to do with. Oh, a couple of things. The price of sand and salt has increased substantially. And the, with the hard winter that we had and the very, very cold uh, temperatures and lots of snow and melting and all of that, there's several areas of crack sealing that needs to be uh, done. So that has been included in the budget.
This is for filling cracks.
Filling cracks, uh, also to hire a street cleaner to clean up all the gravel that's all over the roads from multiple snowstorms.
Okay. Um, another one is the emergency. Can you explain that to me? Last year was one sixty eight and this year eighty one.
Yep, so last year we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the flood mapping project.
Okay.
So that's included in two thousand and twenty one, but that project has finished, so it's no longer in the budget.
And what are we going to spend the eighty one thousand dollars on?
Uh, that includes the emergency program coordinator stipend, travel and education for the emergency program and miscellaneous emergency program expenses, which would be, um, you know, supplies, perhaps um, radios, et cetera.
Okay, now, are we going to be filling that position or like Sean Coopman stated, I believe you said that uh, it doesn't have to be filled? BCP at this time?
Um, you'll have to refresh my memory. I don't recall him saying that.
We haven't had any paper for it.
Yeah, no, I thought we spoke in, and when you spoke to Sean Coopman about it, he said it really wasn't necessary.
Yeah, thank you. So I think that was kind of um, that was kind of just a quick little comment, like, you, you know, yes, you want an emergency program coordinator, but if you can't find somebody or um, you know, if nobody steps up to volunteer, then we, we don't necessarily
Okay.
have to have one. Somebody else will be there for us in an emergency, but, but sorry, no, yes, we definitely need someone in that position.
Okay, thank you. Um, sewer operations have increased, like that's fairly substantial. Budgeted to one twelve and last year was eighty three thousand.
Yes, so that includes the twenty five thousand dollars for the sewage capacity study. So it's uh, also offset by uh, transfer from a reserve. So it's in your revenues up above and also in your expenditures down below. So it's, yes, the expenditure portion has increased from two thousand and twenty one, but that's covered off by your, your transfer from the reserve.
Okay, thank you. And the same thing for water operations?
Yep, that's correct. That would be your water master plan. Yeah.
Okay, we already heard about the grant. Uh, school tax has gone up as well. But thirty six hundred dollars.
All of those numbers for school tax, regional hospital, regional district, library are all guesses at this point and they're an in and an out. So.
Okay.
It doesn't have any bearing on village taxes.
Under uh, total administrative revenue, we have um, salaries under admin, which is an increase of ten thousand over what was budgeted for in two thousand and twenty one when we had a CAO in two thousand and twenty one. Um, the cost. The actual, the actual was up, you know, three thousand, but now we're going up to another thirteen thousand on that basically, or ten grand, sorry.
Yep, thank you. So again, that's something that's going to be part of the wages report that's brought to council at the next committee of the whole meeting. So that's something that uh, you know, definitely make a note of that and we can, you can discuss it at the, that meeting when I have the information for you.
Okay, same thing with all the cost, um, audited cost as well. The audit, five thousand dollars higher?
Yeah, that's just an accounting, um, an accounting issue. So in years past, we were um, accruing the audit costs for the year that the audit related to. But going forward, we are going to be charging the audit to the year that the audit is taking place. So th, this is just a timing issue. There's no difference in the uh, dollar figure for the audit. It's the same.
Okay. Um, information technology. Up six thousand.
That's a reallocation um, item. So that is um, information technology plus the annual cost for the new website, which was moved from contract labor. So it's just a reallocation. There's no additional cost.
Okay. Um, that'll be good for now. Thank you. Oh, equipment at the rec center, seventy five hundred dollars. Now, I understand that there are some uh, equipment that is uh, in the weight room that may cause a liability. Is that correct? CAO?
Yeah, that, that is correct. There is uh, well, much of the equipment that is in that weight room currently is, is extremely dated. Um, some um, is, is, is kind of uh, past due for, for looking at for replacement. So we are trying to come up with creative solutions to replace some of that equipment, keep costs down. Um, but uh, sort of revitalize that space and, and, and um, be able to. But sort of revitalize that space and, and be able to attract more in terms of revenue for it. So we're looking at solutions now. Some of that would be looking at for donations for equipment as well as looking at secondhand pieces with prioritizing the ones that are, that are potentially posing liability issues now, so.
Are the ones that are posing liability issues been removed yet?
They have been, to my knowledge, they've been, they've been tagged out. So.
Okay, so the public can't use them?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I shall wait till the future on the rest of that. Okay. So number 12. Everybody has any other additional questions regarding the financial plan for the CFO?
I just had one, oh, sorry.
Sorry, it's too late. Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Tinsley.
I just had one great idea, which is small community like us, right? You know how companies, you can get 30 employees and they all sign this agreement and they all put a dollar in and they buy lottery tickets, right? So we got 311 people, everyone throws in a buck. We buy 311 lottery tickets every month. And that one with the really good odds is just to just get a million. And then sooner or later, we're going to hit and we'll, we'll get a million bucks no matter what.
I think that'd be a great idea if you could actually gamble with taxpayers' money, but.
Oh, there's a legality to it, oh, wow.
There might be some legal issues regarding that. But overall, it's, it's a heck of an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, bylaws, number 12. None, new business is none. Public question period, we have nobody online, we have nobody in the theater, but this still has to be read? No, okay, we're not going to read that. In camera, none? Adjournment, does anybody have any closing comments or anything before I adjourn? Nope, oh, Counselor Paulson?
I would just like to say thank you very much to the CFO and the CAO on the work they've done to date. So it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, big thanks to the staff.
Yes, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, good night.